So would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So welcome to the Board of Alderman's meeting for Monday, February 3rd. We are still in a public hearing in regards to the bond question for paving and sidewalks. Alderman Tomlin had a question.
Yeah, I just, you know, and I've echoed some of the similar sentiments that we've heard about, you know, is it enough, is it, you know, if, you know, is the plan specific enough, you know, and just kind of looking at some of these, like, for example, the slide, what does the $4 million of paving projects buy, and kind of using, understanding that each of those are their own separate thing, that we can only do like one of those specific things at a time, but using the proportions that we've deducted there, for example, like the total reconstruction, we'd only be able to do five miles, but we flip back a page and we see that the total road distance that requires total reconstruction is .6 miles. So if we just said, well, five, if we can do five miles for $4 million, that's about $800,000 a mile, and it's almost a sure bet that we would, the top of the priority would be the .6 miles that needs total reconstruction, you know, at $800,000 a mile, at .6 miles, that makes, you know, just that .6 miles that needs reconstruction, about 12% of the total $4 million project. So again, I'm questioning whether this is enough, if this project is going far enough, if, you know, and the need for a more specific plan and maybe a grander plan, that can be done in phases, but we, I think we need to know what the entire plan is first.
Well, again, I think, I think the number is good. I think the $4 million is the right number at this point. I wouldn't advocate for more. I think that's, you know, a number we can, we can take, digest, and get that work done in five years. I think a number larger than that probably would go beyond the five years anyway, so if it turns out that after five years, if we find out that we spent a lot more on those expensive treatments, total reconstruction, than we expect to now, then we can, then we could look at another bond to go after this one. I'm not advocating that, and I'm hoping that we don't have to do that. And I think, again, you know, when we make selections, we're going to try to do it in the most economical way we can and getting the biggest bang for our buck, and that's why we don't really want to, you know, have our hands tied to you have to do a certain percent, or you have to do this street, because we published it this year, that were, you know, streets that we're going to do in five years. We really got to be able to make those decisions as we go along, as all these other variables around us, you know, take place. So I really think the $4 million is the right number, and we're going to try to spread it around between total reconstruction projects, you know, we're going to look at roads that are dead ends, that don't get a lot of traffic, that don't get a lot of attention in the normal budget. We try to do one a year, you know, but we've got a lot of them, a lot of subdivision streets that are in really bad shape. So, as I said, I think we really need that flexibility to make the decisions as we go along.
Alderman Whitaker?
I think I'm less concerned about the roads than I am the sidewalk. The million dollars isn't even enough to cover fully the sidewalk considered in failed condition, and also see from the plan that, you know, I know there's still moving parts and you're taking input from things such as the care committee, there's going to be an effort to equally distribute projects throughout all of the city, but we know we need to have a concentration in the downtown based on the importance of foot traffic as related to the local economy and stimulating that. Is that even remotely enough? Is that enough to fix what we need to do in the downtown as well as other failed sidewalks throughout the city? I mean, I guess I'm just curious where this leaves us. It seems like we may have fallen short on that side.
Well, again, I look at it as a start, you know, it's a start, and then we're going to try to parlay this million dollars with other work that we're doing, like the Northwest Neighborhood Phase 1A has got a lot of sidewalk replacement there, and we specifically designed, you know, the storm, storm drain, the new system to be under the sidewalk so that we can replace it as part of the project. So again, is it going to, you know, is it going to correct all the deficiencies? No, but I, again, I think, you know, working with the care committee, getting input from the, from the public will, will try to correct the worst locations, the most foot traffic. A lot of it will be downtown, but again, I mean, you know, there's places, blocks in the city where we've got trees growing and the roots just pushing up the whole sidewalk, so there may be a short block here that we'll replace to get rid of some of this, some of these ADA problems that we have.
Do you have a comment, Mayor?
Yeah, I just, really quick, you know, $1 million, you're right, that's not going to fix the problem, there's no doubt about it. I've been talking with the DPW folks and others, $10 million probably wouldn't fix the problem. We have miles and miles and miles of sidewalks that are either failed or aren't even there yet, so I think, again, an inventory of what we got, which we do on a regular basis. We've been talking with the folks from VCIL about, and you have been involved in that, about what are the priorities for them, obviously downtown, the schools, the hospital, those are areas where they're high traffic areas and we want to concentrate on that. But again, once you get that kickstart and you start working and putting shovels in the ground, then you're going to be able to reevaluate what's it going to take to make a reasonable amount of effort or success in bringing the sidewalks up to an acceptable level. And we don't know what that number is, but if we continue on the way we're doing it, $70,000, it isn't going to get done.
Alderman Humphrey?
Thank you. So I'm generally in support of the paving bond, but I echo a lot of the same concerns, and so I, a couple of specific questions, and I apologize for being duplicative. One concern I have is, do we have enough crews to keep up with the pace that we want to spend the money? Have we started booking them yet? And we've talked a lot about why we need to be flexible and why there's no specific plan, but we want to start spending the money as soon as a new fiscal year is available. So surely we know where we're putting the shovels in the ground first, so where is that first project?
Well, there's a lot of work to be done to get all of this organized. I think I said at the last meeting that really the bond would really, you know, kick in in earnest in 2021, so we, right now, we have about 200 and, I think, $220,000 left in the paving budget, in this, in this paving budget, that's got to be spent before July 1. So we've got a lot of paving in the spring. Typically, we don't have a lot of paving in the spring. So we're going to have a lot of paving in the spring, and then we'll have that $500,000 at July 1, part of the normal municipal budget. So I think, you know, I'm looking at it as really doing a lot of the analysis, a lot of the legwork, getting all of the things in order to really take off in 2021. If we can do some in 2020, in the fall, summer, fall, you know, more than usual, we'll do that. But you're right, and we recognize that fact, that in the past, you know, our crews have done all of the raising the manholes and all of the prep work to get things ready, and we're going to have to look at that to see how we're going to get all this work done, all the prep work, so that we can support the paving projects that we want to do.
Okay, so...
It's going to take a lot of coordination.
Yeah, because we need to get into the regular agenda, so one more.
Oh, yeah, very quick. This may be a little bit premature, but I'm curious if it's on your radar to be looking for matching funds out there, and I think in particular accessibility issues, there's probably money available if you're making improvement that somehow allows greater access. And then even beyond that, too, are there particular businesses that might be intrigued in having some sort of synergy based on, you know, if the surrounding infrastructure is improved, this is going to directly impact them in a positive manner? And I don't know that you've done that yet, nor that you could potentially even answer that, but are these thoughts that you've had?
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, yes, absolutely, and I mean, I think, I think the department does a good job applying for and getting grants, and I think, I think this is the fourth year now, and I said it last year, I'll be back in probably in a month when we apply for the Class II Highway Grant, and, you know, we've applied for Strong's Avenue, I think, three years in a row, and I think last year I said, we should get it this year. It's the amount of money that the state has. I really believe that we're going to get it this year, and if we do, that's another $175,000. And, you know, you take that seed money on Strong's Avenue, we want to make a bunch of improvements to the street, we want to narrow it, we want to do some sidewalk, we want curb cut management, and we could really, with this bond money, we could really spruce up that section of road all the way to Main Street if we get this 175. So we're always looking at that, and that's, that's, you know, that's one of the examples I, I'm alluding to, is if we could get something like that and then add a little bit more of our bond money to it, we can make a huge improvement.
So we have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Sergeant.
All in five favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're in the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. First order of business is minutes of the previous meeting from January 21st.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Alderman E. Torrey.
Yes, I just want to make a little change. I talked with the clerk earlier. I had referred an issue to HR Committee regarding the handling harassment issues in the workplace, and I specifically wanted to make sure that we had some reporting procedures in the conversation because that was one of the things that we got stuck with, so I would ask, I would ask to amend the minutes to include, including reporting procedures for that.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail. Is there anyone to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Yes, sir, you'll come over here for your name and address to the record, please.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Glenn Reed, and I live in Rutland City, Killington Avenue, and I'm here tonight just representing as a member of the Rutland Area Branch of the NBLACP. I'm here to learn about any updates regarding implicit bias training that the board will be doing in the near future, I believe on February 17th, and to see if there's anything that our organization can do to support you in the community, and then also to thank you and commend you for engaging in this training despite any reservations anybody might have. I can tell you from personal experience in working in mental health for years in Seattle, where I took similar trainings on an annual basis, and every year I learned something different and got a whole lot out of it, so I thank you for going forward with this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else outside the rail to address matters not on the agenda? Seeing none. We move on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Alair.
Good evening, everyone. I just had one quick announcement that I'd like to make tonight. On Friday, February 7th, this coming Friday at 6 o'clock at Rutland High School, there's going to be a community viewing of a short film titled "The Face of Recovery." "Face of Recovery" is a short documentary film that focuses on the story of Justin Goulet. Justin was an athlete and a power lifter. He injured himself in a weightlifting competition. Prescription medications provided pain relief for a time, but Goulet eventually turned to heroin. As he became more dependent on heroin, he turned to a variety of methods to gain access to the drug. This short film, "Face of Recovery," shares the unique relationship between Goulet and the United States Attorney Christina Nolan, who actually prosecuted him. Goulet speaks about his path from a collegiate strength and conditioning coach to heroin addict, federal defendant, and convicted felon, and he's a Vermonter. His path to recovery began when the jail cell door closed behind him in federal prison. His message of hope in the midst of a drug crisis is highlighted in this film, and it's also a public service announcement. And the theme of this is recovery from drug addiction is very possible. And the reason I bring it up is I've been asked to introduce the two principles of the film that evening, and I hope all those who are watching tonight who have an interest in this subject and who would be interested in hearing this inspirational story to come to Rutland High School at 6 o'clock on Friday night. Thanks.
All right. Additions and deletions to the agenda, we have one, Commissioner Public Works, its request for a grant application for monitoring equipment in support of the combined sewer overflow. We could add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Sergeant.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First up on the reports and letters is Brennan Duffy, RRA Director, update downtown strategic plan initiative. Brennan is not going to be able to with us, and I believe that Alderman Humphrey is going to bring us up to date.
Thanks. Brennan, I apologize, he's not able to travel back to be here tonight, so he just wanted to update that the vendor for the downtown strategic plan initiative has been working over the past several months, gathering and analyzing data and soliciting input from city stakeholders, and the next step in the public engagement process is a community workshop on Thursday, February 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m., first floor conference room of CCV at 60 West Street. The vendor is first going to present an overview of their key findings to date, and then seek additional public input to shape what they're going to do going forward. So again, it is Thursday, February 13th, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at CCV on West Street. It's the downtown strategic plan initiative and its community workshop. It's open to the public, no homework necessary, just show up and provide input.
Great, thank you. DPW Commissioner Norwender, recommendation for ongoing customer information system utility billing services. Commissioner Norwender?
Thank you. There are two specific requests under this, one that I would ask the board to take up tonight, and the second one that can be referred for a recommendation back, hopefully no later than your next regular meeting. The first is, let me make sure I'm looking at the right one here. The first is the continuation of our memorandum of agreement for another single month with Advanced Utility Systems, which is the vendor that provides our customer information service, basically the software, cloud-based software, where all of our utility billing and much of the financial record-keeping and so forth is all maintained. We've been operating on a three-month memorandum of understanding and much appreciate Advanced Utility Systems making that available to us so that the unexpected closure of our previous contract or fathom wouldn't result in an interruption in our service, and it would not result in us having to make a forced decision without applying due diligence and doing our homework. So we took advantage of that. We are nearly ready to make a recommendation for our next step, which would be a longer-term platform to, to house this information and from which our meter records could go in and bills could come out, but the city attorney has not quite completed, it's very close, has not quite completed negotiations of the specific contract terms. So that one, which is the second point, and that would be with muni billing, is the recommended vendor, and in committee we can get into the, the analysis that we went through and why we're recommending muni billing, but we're not prepared tonight to recommend that the board approve this because the final form of the contract has not been ultimately agreed to. What we are requesting is that the number one item, which is the one-month extension under the current terms and conditions, which we have received an offer from Advanced Utility Systems, be authorized so that we have enough time to both make this decision and also do all the work that's necessary for a smooth transition.
Alderman Clifford?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Clifford?
Yeah, I would move to request that the board authorize the mayor to sign the one-month extension of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Rutland and Advanced Utility Systems under the current terms.
Second. Any debate on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Clifford?
I'd also like to refer to DPW Committee, the one-year contract for the muni building, muni billing, as approved by the city attorney for the software subscription services.
Second. Any debate on the motion to refer to DPW Committee? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Chairman, I'll be, I'll be scheduling a meeting between now and the next regular board meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Norwender, we have the new item that we just added to the agenda, the grant application for monitoring equipment.
Right, we're just kicking off our long-term control plan for combined sewer overflows. The engineers are, we had our kickoff meeting to go over kind of the details and make sure everybody knows what everybody's doing just last week, and there is a new opportunity at the Department of Environmental Conservation for 100% grant funds. They have a limited pool of money, and needless to say, that usually attracts attention when it's 100%, no local share, and so as a first order of business, our consulting engineers are preparing a list of equipment and a plan for both monitoring for the development of the plan and also ongoing monitoring that will be required as a result of the plan on an ongoing basis, so that we might be able to submit a grant application very soon and not get caught behind the eight ball with other towns getting ahead of us. So a referral this evening would make, we expect to have that by the end of the week, by the way, that from, from the engineers, so that would make it possible, at least possible, that the board could consider approving a grant application for that purpose in your next regular meeting.
Alderman Clifford?
Move to refer to committee.
Second. So there's motion on the floor to refer to DPW?
DPW Committee, I'm sorry.
Right, is there a second? What has been, is there any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mary. We are on to reports of standing committees, select committees, representatives. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Alderman Gillon.
I got some news today, that we got a $50,000 check from the solid waste district as a return money from the solid waste district back to the towns. Our share was 53%, excuse me, 35.1%, which equals 50,000, and it gone to the treasurer. She put it in what account?
This is revenue in the general fund.
In the general fund.
That's in the bank.
So that's just information.
Okay. Alderman E. Torrey?
Just a question for Alderman Gillon. Where did that money come from?
From the solid waste district.
For what in particular?
It was money that was collected, over-collected, I would say, and it went into a fund, and every once in a while, we look at the fund and see if we're going to return it back to the towns, and sometimes we hang on to it based on purchases we have to make, major purchases. We didn't have to do that this year, so it was agreed upon from all the towns to return a portion of that back to the towns for over, it's not really overcharging, but it's just, there's extra money there, and it should go back to the towns.
All right. Anybody else representative? Okay. So we are on to petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We have Joseph Giancollo, solar ray preferred site designation request. Mr. Giancollo, do you wish to address the board first? We do have all the information.
Yes, ma'am.
Please feel free.
Thank you, Madam President and Board, for listening to me. We in Rutland here are changing how we all do business. I don't have to tell you what's going on, we've lost a lot of businesses and things, but a lot of us decided we got to do something different, so all my buildings that we have, we changed all the boilers out to high-efficiency, 98% efficient gas boilers, we're putting LED light bulbs in, and we're letting people rent apartments and buildings with electricity. We have three solar farms right now, one's at Patch Place on the roof, one is on my office on the roof, and another one I just finished last summer at House Center. This one here is going to go down on Riverside across from St. Peter's Ball Field. It's critical that you approve it because July is my deadline for getting this online and keeping the funding payments per amount of energy that's generated by the Public Service Board. And I was told that a previous application was turned down or sent back to the planning commission, and I thought I'd probably come here and ask you, please, if you voted in tonight and give us the ability to have this project online as a preferred site, and we can generate electricity at about 18 cents a kilowatt hour, which is a little bit more than what you're paying. And this is to help us change our buildings because the people don't have enough dollars to pay the rent, like Burlington, two hundred apartments, $1,400, here it's just $600, $700. And the only people doing new buildings are the land trust and the housing authority who has the federal dollars, so the private sector has to rely on all the innovative ideas, and it's working so far, and if you would be part of the project and help me out, my family too, give me preferred site status for this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what is the board's pleasure? Alderman E. Torrey?
Question, as I understand this from before and now, all three of these boards or commissions have to agree that it's a preferred site?
Correct.
And I was curious from Mr. Giancollo if all three, if the other two have, the regional planning?
The City of Rutland Planning Commission approved the site and approved some new set of guidelines prior to me getting my approval, and the February, the 23rd of this month, the Regional Planning Commission is my last step. I did the first one with the City Commission, Plan Commission, you people, tonight, and then in two weeks or so, I go to the Regional Planning Commission.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry, Judge.
The local, the local planning commission established some guidelines that you asked them to establish, and they established guidelines to approve the site. They've got more to do, but for my site, they did what they had to do.
Alderman Humphrey?
A couple things. So, Joe, am I correct, so this approval by the board is not required in order for you to go forward with the project and build the project? This approval is to get an additional incentive on the payment for the project?
To get the premium payments, correct.
Okay.
The only problem is, is that if they don't get the premium, they've dropped their, they've dropped their payments down, so unless they get premium payments, it's not worth doing.
Right, so it takes longer for payback on the project?
Payback, yes.
So I just wanted to remind everybody of that, but, and also I'm recusing myself from the vote because of my appointment.
So we had a request previously before this board, and as Alderman Humphrey pointed out, it does not prohibit Mr. Giancollo for doing the project. The request is the preferred site. So the board, we have to, in order to do a preferred site, we have to take action, or we take no action, or you can refer to committee.
the Regional Planning Commission is my last step. I did the first one with the City Commission, Plan Commission, you people, tonight, and then in two weeks or so, I go to Regional Planning Commission.
So, excuse me, sorry, Joe.
The local planning commission established some guidelines that you asked them to establish, and they established guidelines to approve the site. And they've got more to do, but for my site, they did what they had to do.
Alderman Humphrey. A couple things. So, Joe, am I correct? So this approval by the board is not required in order for you to go forward with the project and build the project? This approval is to get an additional incentive on the payment for the project?
To get the premium payments, correct.
Okay.
The only problem is, is that if they don't get the premium, they've dropped their payments down, so unless they get premium payments, it's not worth doing.
Right, so it takes longer for payback on the project?
Payback, yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that, but, and also, I'm recusing myself from the vote because of my appointment.
So we had a request previously before this board, and as Alderman Humphrey pointed out, it does not prohibit Mr. Giancollo for doing the project. The request is the preferred site. So the board, we have to, in order to do a preferred site, we have to take action, or we take no action, or you can refer to committee.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Maddox.
I would move to refer. I think it would be helpful to have another conversation on the subject.
And you're referring to?
I don't know. What's the best committee?
Where'd you go the last time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't take it.
They had a meeting, and I think it was Community Development, but yeah.
It's not a direct conflict, but I'd rather not chair that committee, so if Bill could do it.
Probably might be better to, to General.
Well, it could go, excuse me, it could go to Community Economic Development if Bill could chair it.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll second the motion.
So the motion, just so you're aware, Mr. Giancollo, the motion is they're going to send it to committee just for a little further conversation. It's be favored to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Alderman Bill Gillum will be chairing the committee, and he'll get in touch with you in that meeting as scheduled. So is there any further debate on the motion to refer? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yes, Mr. Giancollo.
I don't know why it goes to Finance Committee, because there's no monetary consideration.
No, 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 Community and Economic Development, not Finance, not Finance.
How long will that, do you have any idea when that's going to take, how long it's going to take? She had it ready for the next meeting.
Right. So between this meeting, it'll be ready for our next meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'll call you, Joe.
All right, so we need a motion to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First, we have Chipotle Mexican Grill first-class liquor request.
Move to suspend the rules.
No, not.
Oh, we're in liquor control.
Right, we're in Control Commission, so we need to circulate.
Move to circulate for signature.
Second. Alderman Reveal. Alderman Reveal will be recusing himself as he, as a liquor license.
Point of order?
Yes.
I thought the clerk signed all the licenses, but not the ones.
Not liquor.
For the first one. Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you, just so I know what's going on.
Okay. Yes.
I would circulate, I just don't know who made it, second.
Alderman Gillum made the motion to circulate for signature. Alderman Maddox, second. Alderman Reveal has recused himself. Okay? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The clerk will distribute that. Now, we have a Chipotle Mexican Grill outside consumption request, which is the clerk.
Authorize the clerk to sign.
Thank you. Second. Any debate on the motion to authorize the clerk to sign? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We need a motion out.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there any other unfinished business to come before the board? Alderman Torrey.
I'm just wondering if we're having an executive session or if we can have an executive session.
Please don't spoil the party.
Related to the fire department. I'm just wondering where we are. It's been a little while.
Oh, I don't know. Well, I don't know, are we?
I can give an update.
Okay, but let's get through the agenda, and then we'll see what's on the other side of the range.
Unfinished business, yes.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? So I did, and I think Alderman Humphrey received a call, I did speak with Joe Tilden, who is our bus representative, in regards to the coldness of people waiting. He said it is not the bus, who had made that decision, and I'll let Alderman Humphrey weigh in as to.
Well, if I may, so Joe called, and I spoke with him last week. He was going to follow up with, his understanding was, it was that warming room there is a responsibility maintained by Laz, which is the parking garage manager, and the bus office is what closes at 4:00, 4:30.
Correct.
But that the warming room should be staying open as long as there's a bus route running, which should be well into the overnight, 11:00 p.m. or 2:00 a.m. on some nights.
Right, 2:00 a.m., I believe.
And so he was going to talk with Ray La Moria about that.
Right.
There's some disagreement there, but I hadn't gotten any follow-up yet. I'd been away for the weekend.
And I haven't heard back from Joe, but that's, that's kind of where we're sitting right now. Is there any other unfinished business, Alderman Torrey?
Just on that, if I could, I think that if this is Laz closing something, and they work at our behest, I would ask that the administration reach out to Laz to discuss what the reasons are, if it's a budget reason, what the, what those pieces are, and, you know, perhaps there's something that we can work out.
Do you want to refer to the mayor or just inadvertently let?
I don't necessarily need to refer.
Check and just see what's happening. So we're on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman Humphrey.
Sorry, could I just add to Chris's comment? I agree, I think a conversation from you, mayor, would be helpful on that. It seemed to me from the tone of the notice that was left at the, at the bus warming station that there was concern about loitering and whatnot. However, I am curious to know as well if it's a staffing issue or what, because I use that transit center every day in the morning and evening, after dark, early in the morning, and I haven't had any concerns of loitering parties other than specifically Killington employees waiting for the bus, that's typically who's there and who frequents that. And when that warming room is closed, folks are waiting in the, in the elevator rooms and in the stairwell, which again is, so I don't think locking that warming room is serving its purpose, because then you're just creating additional traffic where folks using the parking garage are needing to walk up and down stairwells that are now blocked by groups waiting.
Right. All right, so the mayor is aware. So miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Seeing none. Okay, so we've been asked to have an update on the fire department. I assume you're talking about the chief.
Yeah.
So.
So if you have a motion. Yeah, motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the city attorney's analysis of a legal matter would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to enter executive session? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And then a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the city attorney's analysis of a legal matter as allowed under Title I, Section 313a, 1F, with the inclusion of the, just the mayor, I guess, is that?
Right. Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any debate on the motion? Seeing none. Uh, city, city treasurer, here, I don't know if we, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll stand down while we clear the room.